Good morning, everyone. This is Knox County Board of Commissioners meeting on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Our first order of business is to have the public hearing for regular annexation petition, which Jeremy Abrams agent for Kevin and Kathy Byers, one oh three Richard Street, Danville, Ohio, for which this public hearing is being held. So at the time of this public hearing, I'll make note of the record that did go to regional planning, Knox County Regional Planning, and the commission said that they're in agreement with it, but they put a condition that the point one one four acre tract, if ever sold or transferred, that it be sold or transferred to the owner of contiguous real estate. Also in the record, it has that Attorney Jeremy Abrams also mailed out letters to the people adjacent properties, to Leo and Teresa Mickley, to Robert Dial and Lisa Dial, to Dorothy Thompson trustee, and then to George T. West and Danica Price, as well as the Danville Board of Education. And so that says in our record, and we will be having the hearing now for this annexation. And each person that's speaking, we ask that you say your name and your address, so we'll have that for your record. And I will ask if there's any comments from Jeremy, or should I call your esquire?
Please, yeah, Jeremy, fine. My name is Jeremy Abrams, address one twelve North Main Street, Mount Vernon, Ohio, four three oh five oh. I'm here representing Kevin and Kathy Byers. I'd also like to note that in the record is also proof of publication of this public hearing more than thirty days prior to today's date. So pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section seven oh nine oh three, the following must be done in order for an annexation to be accrued. It immediately then goes to section seven oh nine oh two, which is very helpful. So let's go through those elements. The annexation petition must be filed with the board here, as Mr. Purcell said. Sorry, Purcell?
No, it's Purcell.
It is Purcell. Okay, back. All right. It was filed on June sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at eleven nine A M. It is required to be signed by a majority of the owners. That petition is signed by Kevin and Kathy Byers, who are all of the owners of the proposed real estate to be annexed. As Mr. Purcell said, the legal description has been approved by Knox County Regional Planning. I myself enlisted as the agent. And attached to that petition is an appendix, the name, address, and parcel number of every adjacent property owner to the proposed annexed real estate. And then, as Mr. Purcell said, in the record is an affidavit from me that the letters were sent to all of those individuals notifying them of the petition and the public hearings. Now, back to seven oh, so that comply complies with seven oh nine oh two. Back to seven oh nine oh three. The persons who signed the petition, they have to have have filed it. They need to have valid signatures. And the majority of the owners of the real estate, as previously mentioned, Kevin Byers and Kathy Byers are the only owners of that real estate. They both signed the petition. It's witnessed by two witnesses. There's no reason to, there's no accusation that they are invalid signatures or fraudulent signatures. I can attest they are actual signatures. I witnessed them signing. The municipal corporation, which the territory proposed, has complied with seven oh nine oh three. Although I don't believe there's been a report from the engineer, we have the village of Danville here, the village solicitor, the mayor, and zone officer, zone enforcement officer. They will attest that the services provided would be water and sewer, among others. The water and sewer being the primary purpose for the annexation. Then we need to talk about two other things. The territory being proposed is not unreasonably large. We're talking about slightly more than a half acre. In the past few years, there have been much greater annexations specifically into this village, let alone any other village. We're talking about a single house happens to be split into two parcels for no purpose other than prior deed work. But it's 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 a lot, basically. And
Jeremy, we have that up on the screen.
Yes, sir.
That the parcel question.
And that brings me to the next one. We need to make sure that we are not creating a break or a divide in streets. And as you can see on the screen, the property to the north, the property to the east, the property to the south, and one of the properties to the west are all in the village of Danville. This is the one break along Richard Street that is not officially in the village of Danville. Water and sewer are there. They can be tapped into. The only reason that this property is still in Union Township is in action with adjacent property of Mickley's, who do not have the road frontage on Richard Street. So this is going to more unify South Richard Street to show that it is all in the village of Danville. Then there comes to the general good of the territory. The benefit to the buyers is pretty clear. They have the ability to tap into city water, city sewer, which is more reliable. It is less expensive or requires less owner maintenance than a well system and a septic system, especially when it's only on a half an acre. They don't have to deal with a leach field on anyone else's property. They won't have to deal with any surcharges charged by the village by not being a village member. There doesn't appear to be any detriment to the buyers by having the property annexed. There doesn't appear to be any detriment to the village, except potentially not having a surcharge. But then they are going to get the taxes. The only potential detriment to anyone involved here is that the township of Union will receive slightly less on property taxes because the property taxes paid by the buyers will go to the village of Danville instead of Union Township. So all in all, we are talking about probably maximum maybe about a hundred dollars a year. Make that that is the potential detriment versus all of the good that we just referenced.
I'm going to take for granted that the trustees of Union Township have no complaint with this.
So I think that is taken slightly for granted, because if they truly had no issue with this, they had the opportunity to sign an unopposed petition. They've previously done so. And I can't respond as to why they did not do so. My understanding is they generally disagree with the idea of annexation, that they are not going to keep tax dollars because they believe that is their obligation. That was my last conversation with them, but please do not quote me. I do not represent them. But they had the opportunity to make this all quicker and easier. They didn't. So that tells me that they had some opposition. The fact that they're not here tells me that they don't care enough about the opposition to show up and debate it publicly.
Thank you.
So that takes care of all of the elements of seven oh nine oh three. And after we hear from the village of Danville about the services that are going to be provided, there should be no reason that this proposed point five three two four acres owned by the buyers should not be annexed into the village of Danville. Thank you.
Hey, Commissioners, just to kind of note where he's talking about Richard Street. So down there where those two parcels are kind of sell stuff on an island that they're open. Yeah. So just so you know, they're, Penny did some researching with the map department. That was a alleyway that was vacated years ago by the commissioners. And when that alley was vacated, half the property goes to each homeowner on each side. But since those properties were already annexed, it still becomes a separate parcel. So technically, they would have to come back and ask for annexation for those two vacant pieces that they got, which just has never happened. But that's why that does appear to be an island, but that's why that happened.
Is there a structure on this property currently?
Yes.
Yeah, well, so I assume
There's an awesome garage.
Pepper structure was probably an alleyway one point two.
That's my understanding as well. As South Street, head of construction.
Is this to pursue commercial development?
No, ma'am.
So retain, you'll retain a home on it, and it'll be still homeowners?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know in your petition that, you know, in reading the O R C, that they are will be going by the zoning of Danville. So but so Joe, you're here. You want to state your name for the record and give a statement for us, please?
Joe was the mayor of Danville. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the
Did any statement about the annexation?
It's just important for us, for the services that this family are going to receive, and the same, and all the other neighbors around them are already receiving the services we we are offering for them to pay, you know, double seems harsh for them, but it is the policy that we have. We're very concerned about the village taking care of whatever maintenance there is that we're basically landlocked in to, I mean, you look and you see that, we have other places like that in the village where they're just, you know, we've got Union Township, Danville, you know, connected. And then right next door, there's a piece of, you know, Danville's right there and
Were there any special accommodations made for these folks as far as the tap process, hooking up or anything? And they're going to pay a tap fee or
We'll have a tap fee and all that.
Okay. But they haven't made a request to do that yet, right?
Well, they started to, and we told them the process they had to go through to to get get to that point.
So the Danville's a policy that you cannot use our water and sewer unless you're working on becoming annexed.
And which is state your name.
Oh, I apologize. So Noel Alden, attorney at Self-Conspired and Colors, are a part of the village of Danville, one oh three South Main Street, Mount Vernon. So we are going to be providing water, sewer, and police services to this property. Historically, police service has been actually been complicated for this property because if there was a call there, Danville couldn't respond to it. They had to wait for a sheriff's deputy to show up, even though if they were right there before they could actually enter onto the property, unless it was a real emergency. But that had to raised to that level. So this also solves that little bit of issue. I actually was the attorney that that removed Danville from Union Township over twenty years ago because Union Township wasn't providing any services in the village of Danville. And it seems silly that the tax money went to Union Township when the village was handling all the street services and everything else. And this is just a continuation of that process. There were pieces that got missed during that process because they weren't within the village. So this is, there's a few orphaned pieces, and this is one of them. We're trying to get rid of Union Township hasn't done any work on South Richard Street for as long as anyone can remember because they don't have any any other properties there. They don't do snow or ice removal. They don't do repairs. That's always been the village of Danville. And so we're just trying to make sure the person that's doing the services gets the tax money to do those services. That's really all this is about.
So certainly, that house is on septic.
Yes.
Even though water's running right, water and sewers running right in front of their house.
That is correct, right.
So are you saying then, yeah, right there on Richard Street in front of that house for half of that street because they divided on that? Does the township get tax dollars for that little section of because I know that the township's always get a ledger of all the township roads that they have and, you know, how the parcels and how it's broken down. So it's, so you're suggesting that that portion in front of Richard Street for half that street, that money's going to the township, even as the village has been maintaining?
I would assume, yes, that they are. I haven't looked at the ledger to see if it somehow got missed or not, but yes. The the money that comes from that house, though, the property taxes would certainly flow to Union Township, and that's part of what they're paying for. And that's still a problem with those two small orphaned pieces, but below, it'd be nice to solve that. But it's probably the cost benefit analysis that is not enough for those landowners to want to do anything about that, which I certainly understand.
And being a zoning representative, you have anything?
I don't think I have anything to add.
Would you state your name for the
Godbender on the zoning officer in Danville.
And then Jeremy already mentioned that there's no one here to speak in opposition of this petition being annexed in, or they have petition of this parcel. So Stan Barry, do you have any questions?
I think they answered mine. Thank you.
Yeah, I support townships, living, what is the fact there's not anyone here to have any objection to it.
So you're saying you don't, you don't support Danville? Just trying to have you clarify yourself. So we will then conclude this hearing, public hearing for the the say annexation. And we appreciate everyone for their faith. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Next time, Joe, wear your pen for the award.
Okay. Maybe the whole doctor will have this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams.
Okay, this time we have our Department of Law, eight nine one one. I saw her, Laura.
Very she is.
Welcome.
How is everyone?
We're doing great, especially now that you're here.
Congratulations. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. So we went, we'll go through our numbers first. We have four thousand three hundred and thirty-three CAD calls for July, so calls from service or an officer or fire N E Ms responded. Then I've listed just some of the ones we deal with more often. The good news is the attempted threatening suicides went down from last month, quite a bit, actually. Yes. Inserted the mental health calls. Unfortunately, though, our completed suicides, we are already past double of what we have last year already at this point.
You're what, Laura? I'm sorry.
Completed suicides. Yeah. But our nine one one calls, we had one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five, up just a little bit from last month. The non-emergency calls were six thousand three hundred and seventeen. That was definitely up from last one. Tuesday was our peak nine one one day, Wednesday our non-emergency peak day, and the time peak time for nine one one was four in the afternoon and the non-emergency two in the afternoon. So again, you never know. Last month, it was three o'clock and two o'clock, so.
You might want to, Laura, you have how many employees? Twenty, is it?
Twenty.
So they're handling quite a few calls, I guess, is my point. If you look at that number versus twenty employees. And you are fully staffed. Did you say you still had a couple in training yet?
We have two in training because we just hired our twentieth, thankfully, I have to say. And so two will still be in training. But yeah, especially when you look at like the call volume by hour chart and you'll see basically from nine in the morning until about nine or ten at night. There's a twelve hour definitely there's a lot more activity going on and calls coming in. And either does it count because they have to make out
Sure.
whatever, you know.
So say the call volume for the number is pretty huge.
Yeah. It is.
Thanks for that. Thank you.
What do you differentiate between mental and drug related? If if it crosses over, there's both involved.
Sometimes, yes, that's difficult. Sometimes drugs can present as mental health calls and vice versa, you know. I mean, sometimes even a stroke at first, depending on the person's symptoms, could come off as a mental health call because typically they're confused. They don't know what's going on. Or they may not be making any sense of what they're saying. And so you have to try to determine, you know, is this medical or more of a mental health related issue?
Do the first responders keep you updated on what the call really was, Laura? Once you make the call, is it out of your hand? No more communication?
So sometimes we'll have a secondary code on there. You know, to get there, and it was, maybe we had it as mental health related, but drugs are also involved. We'll put that secondary code. Then that captures, but so we've worked, especially with law enforcement on that, because they're going to be responding to those types of calls to let us know so that we can get it in there. Have our sign number correct. Yes, yeah. So
So sometimes it's both. Drugs have created the mental health issue.
On occasion, yes, I would say. I'm hoping part of the reason that maybe these calls are down a little bit is we now have more resources in the county
Have help.
for mental health and maybe they're not turning to drugs as a way to deal with like that. And, you know, I mean, that that takes time for us, so as a county, you know, that'll take time to build that up. And but I think it's heading in the right direction, so. So we had our leads audit, which is our law enforcement automated data system. That is where we run license plates, driver's license, enter warrants, missing people, catch and orders, stolen items, all those things. That's where we do that. And we had that audit back in June. We finally got our results on that, and dispatch had a hundred percent entry rate with no errors. So they were happy about that. So I will say our tech officers, which are the ones who are over leads and trying to make sure everything's done correctly, the dispatchers in the room, they they have a good system of checking. One person checks it, and then it's checked again by a different person. So they can catch if the first one missed something, then the second one hopefully will pick it up. So they had a hundred percent pass rate on their entries with no errors. We were happy for that. And then we just had our least technical and security audit. So that was different. They're not really looking at our entries. They're looking at the technical aspect and then the security of how we protect and secure that system for people who aren't authorized to see it. So which Kyle from I T also had to be on that audit because that's a huge part of it. So there were a few things we identified, some things they have changed that we just have to go ahead and do, and then we'll be compliant with that. And we won't find out about that one, I'm sure, either for a month or two. But the state's a little behind on getting all that in, but yeah, so it went well, though. I mean, otherwise, you know, we had all our policies in place and different things. And, you know, I T had some things in place that need to be there on their end. So that went well. It was a three hour audit. It was Yeah. And then the last thing I have is we had a booth set up at First Friday and at National Night Out, which was held in Freder Town. Dispatch were handing out material for kids and just talking to them. And, you know, we had a big board up with different things on it. So we're planning to do the next First Friday, too. We previously had done this, and we haven't really done it for quite a while, probably since COVID. Then quit, you know, doing it. And so it's really great having them back out in the community because they're always heard, but they're rarely seen. So
You have one First Friday left anyway.
Yes. Yeah, there's just, I believe, one left for September, so.
Well, thank you, Laura.
Any questions for you guys?
No, Laura, you're doing great.
Thank you.
And you're counting down minutes, aren't you?
Not minutes. I keep going back and forth.
Whether you are or
It's scary but exciting. No, I'm going back and forth. It's just scary and exciting at one time, so.
You always change your mind.
Well, and then staying with the standard procedure on that, with Commissioners, we do require a five year notification.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Five, wow.
When you've given that to Penny, you know, Ace and I.
Did, didn't I, Penny? Sure.
Well, Laura, we we want to honor you for your thirty years of service. And I don't know if you, I know you probably zoom into all of our meetings and listen to but on Tuesday, we passed a resolution that says, whereas the Knox County Board of Commissioners takes great pride, and we do, in recognizing individuals who have dedicated their careers to the service and safety of our community. Whereas Laura Webster, at two, began her career with Knox County on July thirty first, nineteen ninety-five. And I know you probably remember that first day as a nine one one dispatcher, providing calm, professional, compassionate assistance to the citizens in their moments of greatest needs. And I know one of the comments that you made over the years that stuck with me is that your dispatchers cannot unhear things that people have said on their phones. Whereas through her years of service, Laura demonstrated strong leadership on operational excellence and deep commitment to public safety, earning advancement first to the role of nine one one dispatcher supervisor, and ultimately to the position of nine one one operations director. And whereas in each role, Laura has consistently demonstrated a deep sense of duty, remarkable professionalism, and a steadfast dedication to supporting emergency personnel and the community they serve. And whereas, her leadership and experience has been instrumental in the development and improvement of end emergency communication systems and procedures in Knox County, ensuring the safety and well-being of countless residents. And whereas Laura Webster's thirty year career reflects not only the longevity, but also extraordinary contributions to public service, earning the respect and admiration of her peers, colleagues, and the community, as well as this Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be resolved, the Knox County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the citizens in Knox County, and with deep gratitude, does hereby honor Laura Webster for her thirty years of exemplary service and leadership in end emergency communications and public safety. And so we therefore made a resolution to honor Laura Webster with the board's highest commendation and best wishes for continued success and happiness for the next five years as director. Oh, that last part wasn't in there. It's so, we we thank you.
The only thing with this, Laura, is when you come see us next month, I'd like you to quote this to us by
So we would like to have your photo, and we, once again, want to
Over here?
Yes. And there's your
I can like these. They're all on my desk downstairs. Power and scroll. Girls in the, there's a story about the challenge. I said, girls in the middle. Yes. Let's make sure I have this upright. Do you want this open or?
Yeah, open is great.
Okay.
Can I have you all just scoot just a little this way?
That's Lori and Barry move to your left slightly.
So a little bit.
Sorry.
They won't bite.
I don't know.
All right, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, three, two, one. One more.
I won't do the countdown.
You with me, you know, when you're gonna get it.
Another one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats, Laura.
You will. You will. Fair enough. You want that? He sure can fix. Thank you.
Thank you. And did I say, see J T after?
Not yet.
So will I sign while, is he there now?
He was out there before.
Yes.
But I didn't see Danny.
So yeah, ten thirty, we'll have our E M A.
He's ready. Just have him pop on and
Is he out there?
Yeah.
So next we have J T with us, the Shane. And we will have J T give us his report. And on his report, I'll ask you to on all these initials you have in there, explain those to the general public so they'll know what the E M O A Q and the E M A and L E and the M A O and all those initials mean. But welcome.
I may forget to do that as I talk, so.
But you had your sheet in front of you. Anytime you skip additions, you'll be all set.
All right, we've been pretty busy.
All right, we've been pretty busy, so uh Amy's actually in another meeting right now finishing something up, so it's just us today. Nice new table for y'all.
Yeah, we'll see how long it takes for this one to crack.
All right, E M A O, Emergency Managers Association of Ohio, that's the Association of Just the Directors, that's not the state. Association. Um, we did a presentation with um. Gary Chapman from Frederick County Schools with Rick Schaefer and Amy and I, uh to the emergency managers on what. School reification looks like for Knox County and we titled it Doing a Lot with a Little. Uh, um, we know what our safety forces and and things look like in Little Knox County compared to like Franklin County. And it's amazing what. Big project we took and when we're able to do with just, you know, the the s- small amount of resources we have here. So we did that presentation there. Um, Amy and Rick also presented to the high school uh s- safety summit. Uh, the the same presentation, so. Um, we did a discussion with emergency management students at Mount Vernon Nazarene University. Um, kind of at the end of their school year as well. Um, we participated in the Danville Amish Health and Safety Event. Um, getting ready to, uh we're actually preparing and and doing one with Morrow and Richland County. Um, up at Owl Creek and I think that's uh it's one evening next month. It's uh after Labor Day, I think it's. The Wednesday after Labor Day.
When you say it out, because Waterford.
Yes, yes, so just the other side of the county line, so um, obviously. The popul- the Amish population goes, you know, both sides of that county line with businesses and church and things like that and and we feel like it's. Instead of us trying to do one and Morrow County trying to do one, we combined those, so. Since it's the same population, uh we had a booth at the Knox County Fair. Um, I was able to take some of those um. Uh, emergency preparedness kits that uh. Knox Looking Mental Health provided for us. We did a raffle for those and and got quite a few names in uh that. We did the National Night Out up in Frederick Town. I think Laura just talked to you about that, had a little booth with our handouts and such and. Um, FEMA comes out with a a little coloring book called Prepare with Pedro. Pedro's a little penguin. And uh those really fly off shelves, so we're gonna have to order some more of those. Um, but it but it's a good way with there's interactive games and things for kids to play with their parents and you and you get that discussion within the home that way. It's not just me talking to you or or watching, you know, a video. It's actually doing something and discussing preparedness as they color or work through a puzzle, so. Truly good outreach program. Um, exercises, uh we had the Knox County Fair Board uh workshop and exercise, think Barry. Said in on that.
Yeah.
Um, they had great discussion with that, just things that. You know, you you look at these entities that put on events and and they think, well, when the you know, the crap hits the fan, we're just calling L E. Or we're calling fire, they're gonna take control over everything. That's not always the case, right? Because we can't make that decision whether. You know, an event creates a situation where we wanna close or we should close the fair or not. That's not our decision. That's that's on the board to do, so. Bringing them into those situations and scenarios to understand they've got a seat at the table and sometimes a little bit more than what they expected, so. But it brings everybody on the same playing field. Um, experienced Mount Vernon, Tim Tough exercise, we had about twenty folks in that. Um, there again, presenting a scenario. You know, X happens, how are you going to react? And you go through kind of that round table. So everybody can hear what the other agencies are going to do or what their capabilities are. And sometimes that's an eye opener. They don't. A lot of people don't understand what their partners do outside of the normal day to day operations. Um, Delaware County had their L E P C as a local emergency planning. Um, Commission Tabletop Exercise. They asked me to come over and evaluate that. Um, so I worked on the L E side on access control and and perimeter security. That's what I evaluated, so. We we do that uh when we need outside evaluators to come in and evaluate ours, we reach out to the. Our counties that we help and and they come in and do the evaluations for us. Um, under planning, I already explained the M A O education or what the M A O is. We have an education committee, so with our conferences, spring fall, winter conference. Uh, we bring in speakers, um presentations. Sometimes it's. Just like Amy and I presented with that, doing a lot with a little, we evaluate what other. Um, E M directors or agencies want to come in and talk to us about. Is it something that's worthwhile that that will help? You know, majority of our folks maybe understand the way some situation was handled somewhere else. In case that comes to us, it won't be the first time where they see that, right? First time we've done it. But we kind of got an idea in our minds of what that response would look like, so. Uh, the P twenty meeting, that is the preschool through university age. Uh, school admins, um as well as our healthcare partners, the hospital, E M S. Um, S R Os, law enforcement outside of the S R O organization and the M A, and we discuss all those. The school, all hazards, threats and things like that.
Where's that now?
Uh, that one was at. The Ranger Center. So we used to do them downtown at Mount Vernon, uh P D and when. All that construction was going on, part came to issue when we kind of adopted the Ranger Center and. It's easier to get into, for people fun. Um, working with the Knox County School Districts and the S R Os and some E M S folks on updating the active threat plans. We actually had a meeting just this morning, eight to ten, uh going over Mount Vernon's. Uh, active threat plans and that's just basically that that's checklist. Uh, is included in that. Those are the. First responder flip charts basically that we put in all the cruisers, we're putting all the fire trucks, so. If there's an incident, we know what the first four or five people are going in on active threat are doing. We know where tackle. Command's gonna get set up. We know where the rally points are, where we need to send uh law enforcement for reunification. Um, who's in charge of our ambulance exchange point, things like that. We talk about our busing M O U and we have to bus those students from their rally point to reunification. Where are we gonna stage those buses? We obviously want them out of the way of first responders or responding to the scene. But we want them close enough where they don't have to to navigate through heavy traffic and things like that, so. Um, I think we finished all the checklists and all the plans today. Um, kind of handwritten some notes where we need to go and change some things and but great discussion out of that group. Uh, we had a meeting with law enforcement on site support uh for the reunification. Um, that would be at Energy Field House, uh what we need. Uh, what they can provide and we talked about interior security, exterior security, verification of identification. If a parent comes, they don't have an I D, how are we gonna? Work through that. Um, so that was good discussion with law enforcement. Um, a local, I shouldn't say local, a um. Contractor for all the pipeline providers um in Knox County Pipeline Operators. Um, sent me an email. They needed updates on capabilities from fire departments, what. Training they have to what level, what equipment they have, things like that. So I sent those surveys out to fire. Um, got those back, not just fire, they had non E M or non fire as well, like Frederick County E M S wouldn't be fired. Um, and we got those back, sent those to uh back to consultant. He's working on what type of co- coming through those, looking at what type of training they can provide. Probably free or charged to our first one, so they're ready to to help in an event like that. Um, I pause, it's Integrated Public Alert Warning System. That's our Knox Alerts, right, that we put things out. I pauses at the side of that where we can touch everyone's phone, whether you're signed up for awards or not. Um, that's a renewal certificate that rolls around. I think it's every five years. Um, I work within Spron logistics to get that done, so we have the capability of doing that. That's also the button at National Weather Service that they can push for us when we have that radar indicated. Interrupt your TV, interrupt your radio, phones get crazy, all that. But there again, that's something that has to be done or we don't have that capability of doing, so. Um, the Holmes County had their mitigation plan meeting, um just like we invited all our locals. Uh, or contiguous county E Ms to come because things that happen in our communities. Some of those are on, you know, those outlying areas that are close to other counties where it might be Frederick Town address, but it's in Morrow County or it's in. Richland County. Well, we kind of need their input, too. They need ours, so I I went over to ha- uh Holmes County and helped with theirs. Uh, we had all hazards discussion with all the county offices and the coop planning. Coop is the continuity of operations planning. Um, so we went through and discussed, you know, if it was, you know, an active threat in the building, if it was a hazmat scene outside. Um, knowing what your essential functions are within your. County agencies, right? Can you get by not doing a. Permit of some type today, but that's something that later you're gonna have to do depending on how long you're out of the building. So we're working through. With those agencies now, they've got the template. Um, Jason and I have been going over this for quite a little while, trying to kind of finalize, you know, who would activate that plan and things like that. Now they have to work with I T and they're gonna have to work with with maintenance too about setups and, you know, what. Agencies work together on a routine basis, right? Doesn't do any good to put the treasurer's office, let's say relocate them at the fairgrounds. Put the auditor's office over here at the memorial building. If that's a daily hourly walk back and forth. Uh, for normal business, we have to kind of co-locate those, so they have to talk amongst themselves and and kind of figure those things out. But they have the template. We're working through helping them get those figured out. Uh, L E P C hazmat plan, uh we had our meeting yesterday, um we're on our uh. Final year of that plan where we can submit that to the state cert, that's the State Emergency Response Commission. Um, as a no change, so we don't have to make major changes to that or update or that three year cycle. Uh, this year we're doing another no change because we just don't have anything major, so. Um, there's a crosswalk with that I have to fill out, so as the reviewer looks at it and they say, okay, this capability, where is it? That crosswalk shows them exactly what page that's on, so.
How do you uh relate to the? Citizens. The M A responsibilities. How do we get that out there so they know?
Uh, we've been hitting Facebook um as much as we can with things. Um, when we have events, we we like, you know, the media to show up. We'll we'll do those uh releases on, you know, like reunifications. Um, I think it was Grant that was with us from day one when we started these with Danville and then moved to. To Mount Vernon and did things like that, so um. A lot of these things are, you know, being out in the community, doing the presentations.
The the only reason I say that, J T, is is we all know our world has changed. I mean immensely over the last um year. And I I know that people think about mass safety, for lack of a better term. But do they really know who's taking care of, if there's a situation like that? And who's gonna be responsible and how do we relate that to the people? Who actually, at the end of the day, be uh. Involved in that when it comes to some type of uh. Active shooter or hazardous spill or flood or hurricane or, you know.
Yeah, just just the public outreach where we can. If if a civic organization calls and says, hey, can you do a presentation? We're on it. We're doing it. Whether it's the Safety Council, Frederick County Senior Citizens, now the Amish community, you know, we take advantage of those situations. We're there to explain, this is what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Grants, the Brick Grant, that's the building resilient infrastructure communities. We're faced two with that, so we sent out the. Um, mitigation strategy update, so that's the five year plan, so everybody got that. Uh, that was a partner and said, where are you at with these strategies that you identified five years ago? Uh, some some of those, obviously, you know, you look at, well, we couldn't do this because of money. We'd like to, but we can't. So that one, we've taken off the back burner. Here's one that we completed, whether that's ditch work because of flooding or things like that. They they update that. Or this is a continuous, we continue to improve water waste with with this project or whatever, so. And then the second one, uh survey we sent out was the wish list, so basically if money was no object. And you could do something to mitigate these things, whether it be, you know. Flooding, like I said, earthquake, you know, all these hazards. If money was no object, what would you do? That opens up the door for when there is a. You know, a federal grant for something. If you have that in in one of your mitigation strategies, you're you're open to get that federal funding. Of course, we don't know where grants are right now, obviously, um, but that that opened you up to be able to do things like that, so.
No, it's just the one that you uh contact and talent ships and.
Yes.
You're asking what equipment they have available.
Not so much equipment available, but what? What are the processes for fixing things you already have? What do you need to to make those better?
Uh, we were actually in a meeting where we raided.
Yes.
Where we.
That so that was the kickoff meeting.
Yeah.
So that started things. So with all the input from all the partners, the day we had the three mitigation meeting. Um, the input from the updates, where you're at with strategies, the wish list, that's. In the consultant's hands now, she's going through, um and and kind of rewriting that plan. For for what this five year update looks like. Now, I heard yesterday that when you submit these to the state. They have like a lottery, so you know, they close their eyes and they pull one out of every five that goes to FEMA. Region five, which is Chicago, and somebody there will review it. Well. Being that federal government's where it's at right now, nothing's going to Chicago, everything's being. Reviewed at the state level instead, which that's the first point anyway. Um, everything gets reviewed, but nothing's going to Chicago, so we ought to be able to get that back a little bit sooner. So when we get that. Right now, this phase, the next uh, when Sandy gets it done, we have the draft, we have a public viewing of that, so we can. Locate it at the library, we'll post it in the paper, we'll advertise, here's where the plan is, if you want to go look at it. Citizens, there it is. Uh, we'll also send that out to all the partners that had it handed, help to like that, so. Uh, that's that review period, uh before we, you know, send it off to the state. Uh, E M P G, everything's on kind of that automatic thirty day hold right now. Um, I'm actually through that. I got an email this morning from my grants guy that it's in process, our last payment. Um, I should say last, um our last submitted payment, right? So out of the. Um, E M P G money, I think I had about eight thousand dollars left on the table funding and I was able to eat that up. In in this last quarter, so. Probably the next two quarters of this year, I'll have all my documents ready, but I won't be able to put in for any funding until after the first year. And I'll be that supplemental, you know, what's left over from everybody else, when everybody else gets their hand out of the cookie jar. What cookies are left that they can divvy up to to the rest of us, so. Because not everybody's e- able to spend, you know, the money that that's allotted for them, so. Um, continuing, I was at the Ohio Officers uh. Ohio Attack Officer Association Conference, um I'm on staff with that. Um, Illinois came in and did a uh class for Rescue Task Force instructors. So our instructor group is just our, you know, top level, um. Trained personnel on Rescue Task Force Ops. We really didn't have any clout or anything behind our name to do that, not that we have to. But we all looked at, you know, what can we do to make this a little more presentable that we know what we're talking about? So I was able to go through that. I got my instructor's certificate, so now I can sign off and and make all my instructors actually certified. Sure, that was through Illinois uh Attack Officer Association. Guys, ladies, so thank you. Um, let's see, Amy's uh. She's got an education, but she met with United Way about being the whole agency for monetary um donations. Um, talking with some other uh counties when they've had disasters and things. Um, tornado events and things that people want to donate, right? They want to donate money. Well. We didn't feel like being a a county agency. We wanted our hand on any money. We want somebody else to do that. Um, we'll take care of donations, ma- or I'm sorry, um. Responders and things and vetting volunteers and do volunteer management. When it comes to that donation thing, we we'd like somebody else to do that. Um, United Way stepped up, so they would take care of that. They already kind of have some things in place, so it falls right in line with what they do. Um, Amy attended E O C Operations Planning Course uh from Ohio E M A. Um, she's on Steering Committee for uh Leadership Knox. They did the Government Day of July. Uh, Barry and I get to sit in on on the uh round table with that on elected officials. Um, Amy is co-chair of the uh E M A O. Amish Safety Caucus, so once a month they do a uh. Teams meeting or a a meeting online and discuss where things are at and and how to get involved. Um, I can't remember how many counties in Ohio. It's it's quite a few that have Amish populations. Some of this. They don't know how to get their foot in the door to talk with the community, right? So there again. When we have success in something, we want to share that so everybody can learn from it, because that's what we're doing when we go to these conferences. If we've got an issue that, how do you talk to those people? Well, we go to somebody that's already done that, right?
Yeah.
Um, why why agonize when you play draw?
You learn what they've done and you and you take it and hope with it, so.
Is that what you say too soon? Uh, she did the, well, we both did the the P I O officer training, so we had a facilitator. Mark Burris come in and teach us um public information, crisis communications and things like that. We had quite a few. Um public information crisis communications and things like that, we had quite a few from um. LE Fire and EMS come in as well, so. Um we also did artificial intelligence training through Healthcare Coalition. It's amazing the time that you can save by doing things with AI, we've learned. Um I was gonna plug Ellis into AI and ask it some things, it knocks socks off within. Um but we've taken plans, even with this reunification, you know, we started with a seventeen-page document. And Amy's plugging it into AI. And she cut it down to about four pages, and then we look at it, we review it, realize it left some things out, so we add to it. You know, it's not so much, you know, garbage in, garbage out, but it doesn't know what you want until you tell it what you want, right? So a lot of times, I'm learning as I'm writing memos and things. That took me forty, fifty minutes to write, that I can do it in about twenty with some ideas, and I throw it in there and say, what have I forgot? There again, you talk about lingo. I can throw this into AI and say, please explain what all these EMAO, EMA, what what do all these letters mean? So you can put that down to different reading levels, it it's just, it was crazy the things that AI would do for us. I sat with Tracy Myers at his work group table and asked us to come up with a plan uh using AI. So he had the upcoming Fourth of July event. I worked for Frederick County PD for a while, I know what that's like, when you have all those people inside the fence at the park and there's only one way in and one way out. How horrible that is to get all those cars out, so we asked AI to create that traffic flow pattern for us. It was accurate, it thought one of the the community uh lakes was actually the one behind. My Marathon Truck Shop, right? It thought that was part of the park, it wasn't, so we had to fix some things, but there again, we learned how to use that. And it it talked about where to have officer stationed, because it just, it pulls in all this information. So there again, things that you might forget, you ask it to help you out and and we really, we really like using.
I've been married to AI for quite.
Is that right? Yeah. All right, other activities, uh we, like I said earlier, we did the uh Service Center Authors for coop planning. Amy sits on the ENC, that's the emergency.
Needs.
Yes, needs coalition, thank you, I said it one time when she was busy and that uh housing needs and things like that. Um obviously, our community partners with Fair Board, Experience Mount Vernon, Music Arts Festival, Mount Vernon Fire. And and I kind of want to talk about these, the Experience Mount Vernon, Music and Arts and Mount Vernon Fire, uh Mount Vernon PD as well. We realized, we really didn't have a plan for events downtown. And instead of having a separate plan for music and arts, and second plan for, let's say, the the Boom Brew Fest in October, a separate plan for First Fridays. It's all downtown, it's all the same responding agencies, why don't we umbrella this? So no matter who has it, they kind of have that template and an idea of what this response look like. And then we can just plug in, who are our points of contact, who's in charge of what and do that. And we've really come to a place by having these tabletop exercises that everybody's on board and they realize this is something that we need to have. Um so she's really done a great job getting that all put together.
Thank you.
Uh school safety discussions has been ongoing with superintendents. Um there again, with the up updating of uh active threat planning, we need to know what communication systems they're using to communicate with. Their parents and things like that, we educate them on what you need to say.
Who's doing the education part of the active shooter in those schools? Who's educating those schools?
Law enforcement EMS, fire.
It's it's our local.
Yes.
It's not a, not a subsidy.
No, so we have trainers in our groups that are Alice certified.
Sure.
Um we morph more toward the run height fight. Um and those are the same ones we'll do for a church, we'll do for a school, we'll do for a company. Um it it's the all hazards active threat, all that kind of wrapped into one. How would you, could you, should you react? Um what are your?
This runs backwards, because the military.
Yeah.
Fight, hide, run.
Well, you you know, you you look at, you know, you want to get people evacuated. As as you can first, but they have to be educated in how to do that, so. You don't run the first shot you hear or the first boom, right? Get a feel for where that's at. Know your exit. People may come in this building every day and use it, and they only use that front door, but they're in an office upstairs in the back, do they know the best?
Best route?
Route out, because they've only used the one, so it's educating on what that environment looks like. Weapons of opportunity, things like that always come up. Um and there again, somebody's gonna call nine-one-one. Well, you can't expect that, well, somebody's already called, I'm not gonna call, no, we want, because each call might be just a little bit more piece of that puzzle. By the time our LE responders get here, they've got a better feel for where something's happening, who it is, what they look like, what the direction is. What's the status, is it a barricade, you know, just knowing that, so there again, education of the public. As well as our, you know, s- school staff. Uh LE Chiefs Meeting, Fire Meeting, those are the uh bimonthly, or National Weather Service. Boy, that's day-to-day, isn't it? Uh you look at last week, you thought it was gonna be nice, and then we end up with rain when I didn't get me our vote, I mean, that's ever-changing. So Tuesdays, we always have this brief with National Weather Service, we kind of get an idea of what things are gonna look like. Um those really come into play, like with County Fair Day, right, or County Fair Week. Getting those folks to understand, you might have a event with lightning tonight, and you've got all these people under the grandstander. You have all these people in the infield, be prepared, a little heads-up situational awareness of of what we're looking at, so. Our our partnership with the and and the BOS is very important. Um Amy goes to the monthly Safety Council Meeting with Chairman Commerce. Uh we had our quarterly LE PC meeting yesterday, and did you already take care of that today?
Not yet.
It's on the list, okay, so that is the two-year roster of our uh members, and I just need the signature on that today. So I can get that sent to the state. Uh Healthcare Coalition, that was yesterday as well, uh we're looking at doing some training for healthcare. Um they brought up the fact that if there was an event where they had to evacuate a nursing home, what that would look like. Um you know, would they rely on first responders to help with that? What kind of blessing needs would they have, you know, we know our ambulance services within Knox County are are minimal. Um we have a few, but not like it used to be, um you know. Getting them to talk with the schools about MOUs for buses and things like that. Um so it looks like that's kind of what we're gonna plan for uh an exercise or training with them, uh we also. Are are talking about a training where they bring their EOPs, emergency operations plans. And we have an instructor that that does healthcare EOPs. And go through each one line by line to make sure they have things in place and that they understand what those different things mean. Um we don't, the last thing we want is their plan to open up and say, oh, come on, go on one. Right, that's not the answer, they have to have some.
Run out of fortune, yeah.
Some idea, some idea of what they need, they're again, they're an intricate part, it's their clientele and their folks that that were assisting, so. Um Central Sector EMA, um co- or uh bimonthly meeting was at Knox County, we had that just on uh Monday. Um.
Where did you hold that?
We hold that at Ranger Centers as well. And and there again, that's networking with all our EMs within eight, nine counties. Um we come in, we have read across the table times, just kind of discussing where everybody's at, what challenges they're having. Uh you know, what what we need to do maybe at a regional level to to, you know, help make things better, mitigate issues, things like that. Uh mobility management tech meeting, that. Um and I didn't have this on the list, but I've I've wrote it in for you, the RV slash trailer project, just to give an update on that. I have taken possession of the um pull behind cargo trailer from Frederick County EMS. It's their old dive trailer, um the last group of commissioners uh kindly put some money aside to help me with that project. I've got the RV almost, I've got everything, all the IT stuff cut out that I needed to do. Um Laura's going to house that for us until we get the project of coming to uh decide what we want in the trailer. How we want it to look, of get getting input from our our command staff, what their wants and needs are, do they need monitors? Do they want dispatch within that trailer, do they want um a drone tether for that? A landing pad on top, a pool cam, what are their needs, that's who's gonna do.
Familiar with that trailer, do we have a u- units in your fleet big enough to tow that thing? Take, probably gonna take a three-quarter ton.
I think with mine, uh I talked to Buckeye Auto, they talked about bat airbags on mine.
Hmm.
Um it, but it doesn't have hitch yet, Amy's does, we need to look at trailer brakes, so I've had discussions with uh Todd Hughes.
Mm-hmm.
Um about outfitting it, and we're gonna go over those things, but there again. The maintenance costs on that, I don't have to drive it once a month to make sure the engines, you know, work. I have to worry about dry rot on tires and packing bearings, and that's it.
JT, we're working on some stuff with that problem, we have the title to your old RV, so when you're ready to dispose of that, she's got the title. But also Frederick Town didn't have, they weren't required to have tags on that.
Correct.
We will be.
Yes, so you're gonna need a wasteland probably.
Well, there's no, according to Frederick County EMS, there's no type, there is no title, but they should have a, they're trying to find a certificate of. They call it, we'll need that, we talked to Christie upstairs, so the clerk of course. So we'll need that in order to send away to get tags for it.
Yep.
Yes, yeah, so these problems got all of that, we're ready to. And I think we have the letter from Frederick County EMS and probably, so you do have possession.
Yes, that's my house right now, I do not have it on the lot, because I don't have a place where we're there.
We should probably have you guys pass a resolution to formally accept that from Frederick County EMS, that way we can get it on a course of accountability insurance. We need to get it on there to ensure it, so.
Yeah, I would recommend you get two vehicles that you can tow that with, I mean, you've got to be currently. Well, you already gotta update them with heavier brakes, badges, or the transmission cooler, or whatever that may be, you know.
So we're. Because we're getting a squad, right?
No, it's a.
I was thinking we were getting a squad.
He looked at all older than, but really the trailer's the way to go, so you don't worry about an engine.
Or you can put it anywhere you want.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And anybody can come get it, you don't need any training to drive it, you know.
Right.
Be comfortable with driving a, you know, thirty-foot RV is what, you know, that can be mind-blowing for some folks if they've not done it. You can send your village administrator and the dump truck to come get this, if if that's all you have available, sure time and you need it, so. Um yeah, it's a good plan.
I can drive that.
There you go.
Yeah, thanks, JT.
Yeah, thank you, thanks JT.
Have a good weekend when it gets here.
Thank you.
All right, we have just a few things, uh. Yeah, listeners, we've got uh a resolution honoring Sir Shelley Poon, the treasurer, which her last day will be August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And uh so you have this resolution to approve, Kenny will then print it and have me sign the official copy of that.
Big motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those favors, yeah. Next, we have to formally accept the bid that we had on Tuesday for the Sheriff's Office Maintenance Building. And this is to uh for the uh Evidence Room, two hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred eighty, eight hundred and eighty dollars. This is to modern builders.
Motion to approve.
Second it?
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
Then we have approved the bid on the jail security system retrofit project in the amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. To Security Automated Systems.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
We have asked, uh you have been asked to provide a letter of support by the township, as well as from ADF. This is for a north of Vernon Housing Development that is being proposed up on North Sandusky Street for uh. I don't know if it's, is it actually low to modern income?
Low to modern income.
Housing, this is your, your uh letter of support is just so they can provide for a grant that they're submitting to the state. Um and the ADF was helping them facilitate that, so this is ready for your signature. I think Bill has looked at this, tweaked it a little bit, and and he's got it ready to go.
Yes, and once we approve, we need to get that down to Julia.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Oh, is ADF taking over instead of Clinton on this? Because Clinton Township originated.
I think the, but I think they were working with ADF, so we're gonna get it back to Julia, she's gonna get it to this individual, because his grants due today.
Good.
My understanding, the city of Mount Vernon has done a supportive letter, I think, was ten.
Yeah, I think, well, like I told you, I think it's gonna play for, it really isn't gonna obstruct anything out there.
Yes.
And while um JT was in here, you did, I have to sign for this certified letter from this pivotal. Development, and it does explain a little bit more about how many units. Um where they're getting their funding from, so and it gives you a. A right to submit your comments and questions, so it was addressed to you, Bill, I signed for it. I'm gonna need you to listen. Hundred and thirty.
Yeah. They said between one and twenty and one forty, so I guess, are you familiar with that area?
Not really.
You're going up thirteen um.
Got the bend.
It's it's where the new Knox uh Community Hospital Pharmacy, that building is new there, it'll be that next bend or that.
Is that where the old recycle center used to be?
Snyder's Junkyard, Marty Mayhem Forever.
Project Pizza.
Uh it's a individual.
Yeah.
We did approve that, right?
Yeah. Okay, the next item we have is JT just mentioned, his LE PC application for members, that's required every two years, and this lists out the members of that committee. Um and uh Barry is your representative on there, and Tanner is the, those are the two elected officials. Uh was Barry and then Tanner represents the city, but it has everybody listed out that that serves on that, and it's ready for Bill's signature if you approve.
Motion to approve.
Those favor say aye. And then let's, if we can, go ahead and have that fifth item for you to formally accept the the trailer from Frederick County EMS. They've given that to the county, we thank them for that, certainly. Um and then like JT mentioned, we put some money aside last year. Think for Hughes, we did a purchase or with Hughes to be able to have that kind of outfitted the way the first responders want it. Once they, as JT gets that ready, we'll get it out there, get it worked on.
So take a motion to accept the um.
A motion to accept.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Oh.
Aye.
And I have nothing else for you today other than that.
Simply remind people that tomorrow morning, gives their sugar rush to um go buy donuts when it's not really football players. At various locations throughout the. Barry, you have anything?
I do not, really, thank you, Bill.
So I take motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we stand adjourned, thank you, everyone.